This open meeting of the Graffin Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted by remote lead in person, assisted with Chapter 22 of the Acts of 22, exceeding from remote meeting protocols through Mark 31st, 20 and 24. This meeting is commuting by Zoom also.
No, it's known, only live.
For anyone speaking this evening, we ask you to step to the podium, state your name and address. And this evening, we have two things on the agenda. There's a modification or a change request for the Fisherville project, and then we'll move on to the Pleasant Street 4B. That will be conducted by Vice Chair Bill Cusker. So, let's see. So, the first item of the evening is, we're going to address the Fisherville requesting the change, and...
No, I have to change batteries.
No, this is just an item of business.
Someone there, do you want to step up? You can...
I mean, you might give me one second, I just have to change batteries.
My name is Munir, from Fisherville, 1A Main Street. So, we're currently doing the drainage install on Main Street. We did... Do you want to just do a quick background, or do you...
Just briefly.
Okay. So, we're doing the... We pretty much did all the 36-inch pipe installed minus the last one, which we're requesting the change, and then we did about 300 feet already of the 30-inch pipe.
36.
There's a combo of 36 and 30. And then coming down Main Street. And then, so our change request is for that last one, it's about 30 feet. We are hitting the top pipe, is roughly hitting the water main, the 10-inch water main, and we are requesting that we go with the 30-inch pipe at that last one at 1.5%. So, that works out with the calculations.
So, and I know, thank you, Jeff, for reviewing that for us and providing your feedback. So, can you explain in a little more detail what the issue is with the crossing of the ...
So, right now, the crossing of the 36, we... Top of pipe would be right in line with the 10-inch water main, and that 10-inch water main is right about four... About... Top of pipe is about four feet, so you would have to lower the water to go underneath the 36-inch pipe. And it's all transite, it's old pipe, and it's... That would mean we have to lower it about four feet and to get underneath the pipe.
Is the... In the water district, they don't want us to touch that water main. If there were other options? Anyone on the board have...
Are you going to use concrete?
Yes, we're going to use 30-inch concrete.
30-inch concrete?
Yeah.
And that's... If they change the slope, Jeff, it'll work out?
If they change the slope to 1.5%, it will work out. They presented two options. One was to use 30-inch pipe at 1.5%, and it does have enough capacity. At peak flow, it would be running about 92, using about 92% of the capacity. Their other option was to use 30-inch pipe only at 1%, but divert some of the flow in the existing portion of Main Street, the 12-inch pipe, from the manhole. With the piping question, there's an upstream manhole and a downstream manhole, two catch basins existing in Main Street that are not along this, the roof of Fisherville, have a high flow, and they tie into the upstream manhole for which they're looking to reduce the pipe. What they proposed for the first... Second option was to lay that 30-inch at 1% and to divert the existing, those two existing catch basins to the downstream manhole, thereby bypassing some of the water from this piping question. And I think that's a big plus for the town, if they make that diversion, rather than lay the other one at 1.5%. Only because that existing pair of catch basins, one of them receives quite a bit of runoff, and quite frankly, the pipe's a little under capacity there now.
What's the side of the pipe that's there?
12-inch.
Where are those two catch basins going to go, Jeff?
We could. Steve O'Connell's at the drawing board with the plan, and he could show us. Thanks, Jeff, I'll try to use some colors, I know from there, black and white can be hard. So, this thick black line, just quickly, is the Main Street drainage that Munir is installing. They started at the school, 36-inch pipe is installed across the fire station, across Sunnyside Terrace, across Olmwood Street, and then this run right here in orange is where it turns from 30-inch in Main Street to 36. This in orange stretches the section that's being requested to be 30-inch at a steeper slope. The reason that pipe size increases from 30 to 36 is because it receives flow from, I'll call them DOT projects, drain structures. So, there's two catch basins and a manhole. When those enter into the Main Street drainage system, the flow from those causes the increase in pipe slide, pipe size, at the slope that was being proposed. That 36-inch at 1.1% or 1% hits the 10-inch water main. If you allow us to go with a 30-inch pipe at 1.5%, we can not quite match the crowns, but we'll be above the invert, but we can get under the water main and still carry the capacity. Now, what Jeff is referring to, which was something he and I discussed before we knew a little more information, was that the DOT manhole, number 84, instead of connecting to this manhole, which requires this pipe to be upsized to 36, if it were to go directly to this manhole, to take that flow out of this orange-colored pipe run, and then potentially increase that pipe size. Because as part of the DOT project, this catch basin here gets a lot of, it's a lot of runoff. You know, everything from this neighborhood, there's no other catch basin, you know, so this catch basin here, but all of the flow that comes down misses that catch basin, gets into the Main Street, goes to this manhole, which demonstrate by the calculations that this DOT manhole was a little, pipe size is a little undersized. So, the problem and concern we have with that option is that we think we're going to hit the water main, again, by rerouting it, and we'll kind of be where we started.
But that's only a 1-inch pipe, right? A 1-foot?
It's a 12-inch pipe, but all by itself, it doesn't have capacity. So, I think what would be best is potentially increase the slope so the capacity can increase, or increase the pipe size, or a combination of the two. In both scenarios, we think we hit the water main. The other concern I have is if we were to increase the slope and drop the elevation, you're just inviting potential water to come back up into an already set of shallow catch basins. So, keeping it up as high as possible potentially allows this water to flow and, you know, not affect those catch basins. So, between the conflict with the water main and, you know, lowering pipe inverts, you know, are two concerns we have with that option. Otherwise, we would completely agree, I mean, that's why we thought of it from the outset. Let's just take this little segment of purple pipe out of play, go right to that manhole, like I said, and hitting the water main with that run of pipe puts us right back kind of where we started. So, I think the best option, if I may, would be to maybe approve potentially some options, and then with Jeff's oversight, we could, as we excavate and confirm, could do, you know, one or two options. I see the eyes looking at me.
We're in the middle. He's over there, you're over there, and we don't know which way to go.
Well, I think we're also here because of the history related to the project. I'd like to think that everyone would agree that if this was, if there wasn't some history related to this, this probably would be a field change between, you know, pork and oil and Jeff's input, and keeping, I'll say, the burger up to speed, but I think we're here in this setting because of the history, and, you know, we believe you would want some input on this process. That puts it in perspective a little.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
What would happen if you laid a 1-foot pipe parallel to the... Would they fit in the manhole?
It would... They would probably fit in the manhole.
I know you don't do things like that, but...
Yeah. I feel the biggest benefit is if there's going to be all that disruption to what was nearly a completed road. The best benefit would be to increase the pipe size, and if the pipe size can't be increased, it's really done with giving it up. And putting two pipes in. Each of the options work according to engineering practices. They've demonstrated through their calculations that both of their options, option one going to 1.5% of 30-inch, option two going to rerouting that other pipe, also works. My third option was to, I looked at it as if there's going to be disruption by relaying the other pipe for the cost of new pipe. They could make an improvement to a situation down there that, to the best of our knowledge, is not a problem right now, but nevertheless, if it was a good opportunity to fix it by buying 30 feet of 15-inch or 20-inch pipe, if it would fit under the water main. So, in a perfect world, that would be my recommendation, is my option three with a larger pipe diameter, but if that doesn't play out, option one and option two would also work. And I would discount option two because that's replacing 12-inch and 12-inch with 12-inch pipe.
Was the water main broken at some point?
No, the reason the location and elevation aren't known is from recent DOT work, but then Munir verified elevations in the last couple days. So, no, it hasn't been disturbed, hasn't been broken, but Steve from the water department was pretty, you know, not adamant, but his wishes were that, you know, not to mess with the whole transite pipe, if it could be avoided. And I did have a conversation with Mr. Lemoine, and it would take a shutdown of the system disruption to the people who serve there until they may at least install an inline down to further reduce the amount of disruption. It would be overnight work, be shut down, I believe, with this water at the school for some period of time, so again, that's why it's overnight work. And transite pipe is asbestos cement, it's brittle, and once you start working with it, sometimes it can get... You get in, I wouldn't say over your head, but you spend a lot more time fixing and working with it, making the connection back to the new, Dr. Lyon.
Mr. Chairman? All right, Jeff, you just said this, but I was working on a motion, so I didn't retain it. Are you suggesting, if they can't do option three, which one, option one or two?
Option, I would go with option one, because option two just replaces the 12-inch pipe.
And then to the development, well, to the room, what I'm proposing is a motion, and just as a reminder, we're here to determine if this is a major change or not. So, I'm proposing a motion that would determine this to be a minor change, option one to be a minor change, but I'm going to subject it to a condition, C1, that the developer agrees to work with Graves Engineering to implement their option three as detailed in Graves Engineering letter dated May 15, May 2003, or similar. So, I mean, is there any point in going, I guess I wasn't clear, I mean, is there any point in trying to work out something like that, or do you think option three is dead in the water?
In my opinion, if they did test, some test pits, which I understood they were going to be doing possibly yesterday, I don't know that for sure, and if they've got good elevation information, then we'd be able to make a decision, or we'd know, you know, before the bucket of the excavators in the ground. Yeah, I don't want to speak for Munir, but I think, I don't think we're opposed to option three, I just, you know, we think we wanted you to be aware that we could be in a boat where if we went down that road, we'd be back, so...
Yeah, so that's why, that's why instruction is, you know, you know, condition C1 is developer agrees to work with Graves Engineering to implement their option three as defined as detailed in Graves Engineering letter dated 15 May 2013 or similar. So, I don't think we're really tying you to do that. So, we're saying, you're going to do option one, but you agree to try to do option three. So, I mean, does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
It sounds reasonable to me, as an engineer.
Yeah. Yeah. Our concern was, you know, again, water main conflict, but if that can be avoided, then option three is acceptable.
Go watch your back there. You don't want to back there.
Yeah.
Is the open pit that's there now, was that, that's open right now?
Yeah.
That's the area right there?
Correct.
Yeah. Get quite a crew here today.
Yeah.
We just opened it up, shot some grade, so just make sure everything works, so it does work.
Okay.
With the 30-inch, I will be...
With that information today, we can count the 12, you know, but not calc it off of, you know, DOT plan, but try to get real elevation.
Real, thank you. And even if that could be upsized for 15?
Sure.
I mean, my preference is to make 9.2 CFS, but if it can't, you know, the 15-inch pipe will increase the capacity from about five cubic feet per second into 12-inch, top around seven point something to the 15, because it's much closer to the 9.2 that was describing to get to.
Any other comments from the board?
Okay, and Mr. Chairman, I moved into zoning board appeals, determining the change to the Fisherville Terrace Confidence Department, detailed in Fisherville Terrace LLC, letter dated 15 May 2003, option one, to be a minor change, subject to the following condition, C1, developer agrees to work with Graves Engineering to implement their option three as detailed in Graves Engineering letter dated, Graves Engineering letter dated 15 May 2023, or similar.
So...
Second.
Motion made in second, full call vote?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Which is wild. So, we'll move on to 59 Pleasant Street.
Thank you.
Thank you, Munir.
I think that's for us to share.
That's for you guys to share. Well, once you do public comment, that one will go to the public, and then we'll do that down the way.
You want to take over?
Yes.
Okay, so we're now going to reopen the public hearing for case number 892, 59 Pleasant Street, Chapter 42B, application. I think we probably ought to start with the issue of safe harbor. We did hear from the Department of Housing and住房. I think everyone's aware, the applicant appealed our safe harbor assertion, and that appeal goes to DACD. DACD has then, on May 12th issued a letter ruling essentially that they agreed with the applicant that we are not in safe harbor. So, that's where we stand. With that in mind, things I said at the beginning of the last hearing kind of really apply at this point. We need to approach this as if it's going to happen. The town loses a lot of leverage, I don't know, that we hoped we'd had with safe harbor, we don't have that. Dan, I don't really want to add anything more to it, but I don't think there's much more to say. Actually, the question had come up, can we appeal this? The answer is yes, we can. The appeal votes to the Housing Appeals Committee. The Housing Appeals Committee is notoriously, or maybe notorious is the proper word. The Housing Appeals Committee has a reputation for ruling in favor of developers almost all the time. So, you know, the chance of the Housing Appeals Committee ruling in the favor of the town, especially something like this, is really is pretty gray at best, is probably pretty slim, so there really isn't a reasonable option for you to appeal. So, with that in mind, I think it's time that we move forward. We did ask that Graves Engineering, our peer review consultant, review what's been submitted, and I think at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Jeff Walsh to kind of go through from Graves Engineering, to go through his report and share with us what he thinks with the view kind of of...
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, we did issue a letter this afternoon, I apologize to the board for getting the letter and then the meeting, and we should have wanted to have it out before the meeting was supposed to go. But nevertheless, schedule's been tough, and got through it thoroughly by the end of, by this afternoon. We're charged with reviewing the site plan as it pertains to general civil engineering, exclusive of water supply and wastewater disposal, those in hand by the water district and the sewer department. We look at the stormwater, we look at these engineering aspects, we respect compliance with the local regulations whereby this is a 42B that includes the local stormwater regulations and weather regulations that customarily the Conservation Commission would address. Basically, you know, we looked at the layout and so on and so forth, grading, compliance with MAST, the stormwater management standards in the handbook, stormwater handbook, I should say. And lastly, our review does exclude traffic, which I understand if the board's going to utilize peer review of traffic, we'd be by a traffic consultant, we don't specialize in that type of work, nor do we review any of the architectural type of things. Our letter is, as you normally see them, but for those not familiar with it, will, our comments together by the different zoning, different bylaws, such as zoning bylaw and so forth. And zoning bylaw, there is where the multifamily use is not allowed in the zoning district, but it is a proposed multifamily use. When it comes to reviewing a 42B such as this, we will look at the section of the zoning bylaw that pertains to multifamily use, and that speaks to certain things, even complying with subdivision user rights, standards, basically construction materials and thicknesses of like pavement and gravel and all that. And then lastly, we've got a section in general engineering, we have comments that pertain to engineering, but we can't hang them to, hang our hat on any one particular bylaw regulation we put together under general engineering. It's a 42B, it's a dense, it's a dense development, as they all are, and quite frankly, when I review these, I look at the allocation of space on the property. So, knowing that it's dense, knowing that we, in my work with this board, many of the projects have large buildings in residentially zoned districts. It comes to allocation of space, such as, is there enough space for a septic system? Well, in this case, it's public sewer, so we don't have to worry about that. Is there enough space for parking? Is there enough space for the building? Is there enough space for reasonable setbacks? I like to try to look at the yard setbacks at a minimum. In some projects, there's been discussion of building massing and so forth, that goes beyond me. But again, that, setbacks and allocation of space, stormwater management, is there enough interior information and space allocated for stormwater management? I can tell you that we've got a set of plans that are beyond the level of preliminary plans, they have a lot of detailed information. There's a set of hydrology calculations in the stormwater report that support the sizing of the stormwater systems when you view the input data of the hydrology, the output evaluated, a number of different things, peak rates of runoff, volumes of runoff, and, you know, a lot of work went into what appears to be a short line. And that's my introduction to this now, if I could. I'd like to probably focus on about seven or eight comments, if I would, the more major comments that I'd like to bring to the board's attention. We'll start with number one on page one of the Graffin zoning board. This site is in the, it's one of the two residential districts, I believe it's the I-20, but it's also in the water supply protection overlay zoning district, and it's in the zone two of a public water supply is mapped by MAST GIS. And the public water supply, the zoning water supply overlay district generally follows the zone two. But anyways, zone two is an area of contributing groundwater to a public water supply well under the most severe pumping and dry weather conditions. And that being said, comment number two speaks to the water supply overlay district component of that, in that there can only be a certain amount of previous cover. In a water supply overlay district, there's supposed to be a certain amount of recharge. The applicant's proposing to convey a portion of the site that's going to be left undeveloped, he's looking to convey it to the town. They provided calculations stating how much proposed previous cover they would have based upon the entire parcel of land. My recommendation is, this should also be looked at to make sure that if the donated land were no longer under the control of the owner of the 42B, that they would also not exceed the threshold of 75% of previous covered over the property. Moving on, along that note, I don't have a specific comment in here about the water supply overlay district and the fact that they're over 25% cover or 15% cover, I forget, which is the, which is the criteria, but I can tell this board that under the two 25 and 100-year storm events, the volumes of water discharged during a rainfall event do increase very slightly in the two-year, the most frequent storm, and a nominal amount in the 10 and the 25, 2500-year storm. I would recommend that the design engineer strive to try to recharge some more water during the 10-year storm event. That's, that's the biggest increase as far as, you know, the percentage, if you will, of increase. Very important in, you know, with respect to the most frequent storm, analyze the two-year storm event, it was basically a negligible increase in runoff volume that tells me that they're recharging water under the more frequent storm events, which is the desire of the water supply overlay district zoning regulations.
So, those last couple of comments, is that part of what you've written, number one, or is that written somewhere else?
That's not written anywhere.
Okay, good. Because I didn't see it anywhere.
I was holding back on that, and maybe the... I was holding back on that and that maybe there'd be some revisions for the hydrology computations, which could affect volumes of water.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to number ten on page two. Can you hear better?
You want to ring the alarm?
Oh, sorry.
Number ten, there's a sidewalk proposed along Pleasant Street to go from Christopher Drive to Peter's Way. Very prudent, very warranted to have a sidewalk now that there's a, there, Peter's Way has pedestrian generators, Christopher Drive and that subdivision also does. But, but with this project right in between the two, people are gonna be walking. It's warranted to have a sidewalk along Pleasant Street. The subdivision rules and regulations call concrete sidewalk. They're proposing the tubus, so that's what comment ten is all about. Comment eleven plays into that. Pleasant Street will meet the definition of a major road in the subdivision rules and regulations. Major road is supposed to have vertical granite curb. They're proposing vertical, the tubus concrete. Point is, we have to have a vertical curb there of some sort to better separate the vehicles from the pedestrians. I don't want to see them both at the, both the sidewalk and the road at the same surface. And so that's what ten and eleven are talking about. Number thirteen, outdoor lighting was not yet shown. I would, I suspect that that's probably gonna come along as, as the plans evolve, but needless to say, I needed to get that on the record. Moving on to page three, number nineteen, number twenty-two, I would like to talk to these together. There's an existing drainage system on the west side of Pleasant Street in front of number six Pleasant Street. There's, I'm not sure where the three different, I think there's three different pipes where they all come from. It looks like at least one of them is catch base along the street. But where the water is collected in the drain manhole on the west side of the street, it's, there's a pipe that runs over to the east side of the street and discharges the water onto property number fifty-nine. The hydrology computations, I'm sorry, the site plans show that drainage system, the discharge from that drainage system in Pleasant Street being conveyed into the stormwater basin on the site, which is good from the perspective of additional treatment of the stormwater, because now the discharge is gonna be closer to the pond on the east side of the property whereby right now the water comes into the field and I doubt much if it makes it out of the field, most of it probably infiltrates. When I was out there in late April, there was groundwater, must've gotten to that drainage system because it was, had been a beautiful day, a few days, and there was water coming out into the field and within about two hundred feet in any direction, there was no more water infiltrates. So anyways, the site plans show that drainage system going through the stormwater basin, but in the hydrology calculations to support sizing of the basin, that flow is not accounted for. But conversely, on, there's, there's a plan that shows the areas that contribute flow to each of the catch basins. On that plan, there was a, what we call a bypass type of system where, whereby the water from Pleasant Street drainage system, rather than getting discharged into the onsite stormwater basin, was being routed around the stormwater basin, which is also a valid way to deal with it. But that, you know, the, the information needs to be consistent as far as between the, that watershed plan and the hydrology calculations in the site. Quite frankly, it seemed to be slightly a work in progress, might have been thinking of two different things. Either one's valid, if possible, for treatment and pushing for extra infiltration. Be nice to route the stormwater through the basin, but we'll see what that goes on in the design side.
Is that one?
You have the microphone.
It's on. Do we want to do questions during or? I don't, I think it would be appropriate, because he's going through step by step before he moves on to something, I think that would be appropriate, yes.
There's a catch basin that's basically discharging onto fifty-nine?
There is a drain manhole that discharges onto fifty-nine. There's three pipes, if I remember right, that the plan showed that tie into that drain manhole. I suspect at least one of them is a catch basin, so one of them.
And it comes from where?
I'm not sure where, but I think it's somewhere along Pleasant Street.
And is it, is it legal?
It's in the town right of way. I suspect it's some kind of drainage system over there. I don't know for a fact one way or the other if it's legal.
You know, is the town just dumping the water on somebody's property in that way?
It's not.
I've had it happen to me, so.
I understood. I, whether or not it's legal, I have no idea. I can tell you what I see, saw out there is common practice with this community and most other communities.
From, from fifty, sixty, eighty years.
You've got it, you've got it.
So, but we're talking about waters being dumped on sixty Pleasant Street?
No, dumped on fif, discharged onto number fifty-nine.
Which is the applicant's project.
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
And the, the site plans will need to deal with it and any supporting documentation systems, applications will have to.
Mr. Chairman, I could provide a little bit of detail if appropriate. So, everything that's been said so far is accurate. So, there is a, there's a roadside swell on the opposite side of Pleasant Street from the project site. And then there is a catch basin that collects water. There's three pipes that come into catch basin. Two come in at like, let's call them nine o'clock and three o'clock from generally the roadside swell. There's a pipe that comes in about twelve o'clock, which seems to come from somewhere on the property at sixty. And what that does is it comes, it's collected in that catch basin and there's a culvert under Pleasant Street that discharges on fifty-nine Pleasant Street's property. Specifically, it ponds right in this corner. This is the source of the water that floods this property on Peter's Way occasionally. One of our goals through the W I P process was to address that flooding that disinflected experiences, which is why, you know, we did pay special attention to collecting that water during the grading in this area, so it did not, you know, flood that property. And then we, we will look at as much as possible to get that water into the drainage system for the reasons Jeff stated, primarily recharge in the water supply protection overlay district. But he's correct, an option would be just to simply run a separate pipe and let it bypass through the site. So we're, we're very aware of that situation. What's happening now, and we verified this from, you know, multiple field visits and survey work and measurements, is the culvert pipe that runs in Pleasant Street is actually running backwards. You know, it's not pitched towards Pleasant Street, but not drastically. So, some of the assumptions we made based on pipe capacity were truly that assumptions, you know, more than assumptions, but detailed engineering type assumptions. So, pipe capacity at, at a reasonable slope, if it wasn't running backwards. So, if that pipe can handle so much water at a slope, then, you know, as it were to pass through the site, again, it could only, you know, expect to see so much water. But the comment is fair and we plan on, you know, looking at that closely and responding and making a revision accordingly.
Thank you. Anything else we'd expect too? Moving on to number thirty. Number thirty, number thirty-one, they're challenging my memory. On the very northern side of the property, Steve O'Conne was showing us where I'm gonna speak to now, right along the northern side of that property, there is a drainage pipe. Plan showed it to be thirty inch diameter. I remember it as being about that. I believe it's perforated pipe set in stone, it's basically a leaching trench. It receives runoff from the drainage system in Christopher Drive. Chris, the drainage system in Christopher Drive comes down the hill. The runoff gets piped into the intersection of Pleasant Street, a short distance down Pleasant Street, and then churns and comes on to the property of number fifty-nine. In two thousand two, Christopher Drive subdivision was brought before the planning board for basically the Asbilly Plan Review and close out of the project. I had been with Graves Engineering a year at that time and I was the field guy doing the Asbilly Plan Review. So, I went back to our records, I have the letters, we no longer have the file with the Asbilly Plans. There may still be a set of plans somewhere in Town Hall, I'd like to think, or at the D P W. But nevertheless, my recollection is that, again, that is a, part of the Christopher Drive drainage system, its purpose is to infiltrate water. And when that trench and pipe fills the capacity, the overflow is a catch basin on the east side of number fifty-nine, right about where the light dot is. The water actually flows out of the catch basin. There's a riprap plunge pool downstream of that to anticipate any velocity and basically let any excess overflow flow overland. When I was out there at the end of April, there's a little bit of seepage coming in around the riprap, so I don't know if there was a leaky pipe joint or something like that. There was certainly water trickling down around there. The short of it is, to the best of my knowledge, that's an easement granted to the town for the purpose of the drainage system that serves Christopher Drive. Number thirty speaks to the fact that there's grading proposed on that easement whereby the grading is gonna make it such that a piece of equipment that the town wants to bring in off of Pleasant Street and pass down the easement, they're not gonna be able to do that anymore. Between the berm, a two to one slope, which the piece of equipment would be basically, the two to one slope would be left, right to left, so it would be too steep. And it, number thirty just speaks to access along the easement. Number thirty-one speaks to how the drainage system within the easement functions. The plans right now show that that catch basin rim would be replaced, there'd be an outlet pipe at a lower elevation. In other words, the water wouldn't be allowed to impound in this leaching trench as high as it used to and there would be a loss of recharged water. And more often, there'd be overflow from that drainage system that serves Christopher Drive. And my recommendation is that, one, there needs to be access along this easement so the town can get to any of the, any part of the drainage system to, to serve it if and when it needs any kind of service. And that's number thirty. Number thirty-one is if there was gonna be consideration of modifications to this, my opinion as an engineer, modifications would have to show that the drainage, this, this drainage system will function in an extremely similar way to what it does now. And then lastly, in thirty-one is, I think D P W should be soliciting for comments if it's even gonna be willing to consider a modification in this drainage system.
So this, this easement is, is it on a deed or?
There is a recorded plan that shows the easement. I didn't go look at deeds to see when, when it was conveyed, when the easement was conveyed. I couldn't find, excuse me, I could find recorded acceptance plans, but that was of the rights of way of Danielle Drive, Laura, Laura Lane, Christopher Drive, but I could not find anything that conveyed, a deed that conveyed the easement to those. But I did look very hard, quite frankly. But again, that's a process that occurred back in two thousand two. That's, that's what I'll review, I'll review with us.
They must have that in the planning department, should they?
I would like to think so, but Town Hall's been renovated.
It's only twenty years ago, so it's not.
It, it, it should be around somewhere. I know there's been office changes and moves and so on and so forth from Town Hall and I don't know what happens to the records then. They should be around somewhere.
Yeah, Steve, but my point is the Asbilly Plan should show even more information and have elevations on and so on and so forth, if there was a need to know that information, if they had shot, shot elevations already.
That's a three foot pipe?
I believe it's thirty inches what the plan calls for. I remember being lodged diameter, so probably twenty-four a lot.
Is there such a thing as oversaturation? I know it's all gravel there. I, I walked in there and I saw the test pits and it was gorgeous gravel, but can you oversaturate?
If it ever got too much water and it could infiltrate it, that's why the, that catch basin is at the far end. If it can't infiltrate, it, it just puddles up on the ground in the case of what flows over toward Peter's Lane, Peter's Way. That's what, I mean, if, once it's a hundred percent saturated, then the access is gonna have to go somewhere to service overflow if it can't get it to sort.
So, Dan, I have a question. If I'm understanding this correctly, there is an easement, the town has the rights to certain things on this land. I don't think we're in a position to do anything to wave or get rid of that easement. I think that that would have to come from the executive side of the slug board or, imagine slug board, would have to agree to changes, essentially. If, if, if there's gonna be changes made to this, whether it's for the access or to whether how, how the easement is used for collecting drainage for Christopher Drive, I would think that someone at the town level besides us would have to, we can't do that.
No, that's right. I, I think the applicant's engineer probably addressed, would probably explain or contend that they're not changing the utility of the town's easement. So that's really, I think, an inherent question. Certainly, the applicant cannot make changes to our easement that change the utility of it, that make it less effective, and then that's what Jeff's addressing. So they, the details, the details needs to work that out.
All right, so really, well, I guess the message then to the applicant is, you know, I, I agree with Jeff's words that we should accomplish with D P W as far as the access and the ability to, to do whatever it is D P W needs to do. And then I guess it's an engineering question about whether essentially the runoff from Christopher Drive will continue to be handled properly in real layman's terms.
Yeah, and can I ask a question to Jeff? Is any of the project's drainage in this area, or is it all away from?
No, the project's drainage is kept separate from, from the Christopher Drive drainage.
Excuse me, excuse me, could I say something?
No.
I can't.
No, we'll have a public comment a little bit later.
When, when you think that might be happening?
Sir, I said, no.
Before, before you built the place?
If you're gonna continue to interrupt, I'll ask you to leave.
I think I'll probably be leaving. I thought we were here to decide whether we're gonna allow, recording me or not.
I will be public comment afterwards.
You're already building it. You're not even talking about the zoning law. It's ridiculous. It's absolutely disgusting.
Moving on.
And also, isn't that the guy that's got the?
Sir, you will be recognized later if you ask.
Now, now.
No. Yes, then leave.
I won't.
Thank you. Good luck.
All right, Mr. Chairman, number thirty-two. Again, the sidewalk is proposed along Pleasant Street. We respect the drainage of Pleasant Street. Right now, the runoff from the eastern lane, the northbound lane on the east side of Pleasant Street flows across the pavement onto the road shoulder and then on to number fifty-nine. So when a curb is placed, there will be a drainage issue on Pleasant Street. So drainage along Pleasant Street will have to be addressed in the design of the sidewalk. And there'd be, quite frankly, you know, there'd be puddles all along, but, yeah. That's what number thirty-two's about. Got a couple more and I'll wrap up. Number thirty-four on the last page, page five, there's a number of garages proposed, very common with these types of facilities. The garages, if there's a travel lane of X feet wide, say twenty-four feet wide through the property, my experience is common practice is to set the garages back generally about four feet, so that when a person steps out of the garage door or a vehicle starts to back out of the garage door, there's a little bit of buffer, if you will, before they get into the space allocated for a, a, a travel lane. And even though people be traveling, should be traveling, slow in a car along the travel lane, most of the garages were set back, one of them was not, and that is a safety issue,
um, most of the garages were set back, one of them was not, and that is a safety issue, I think it should be set back. Uh, and lastly, number forty, um, they requested a waiver with, for parking, uh, for this type of use. It's required to have two or four parking spaces, uh, per dwelling unit under the zoning bylaw. Um, they're proposing, uh, somewhere around two-point-zero-eight to two-point-zero-six spaces per dwelling unit instead of two-point-two-five. Um, so they're a little under with respect to zoning. Um, and, and if the board was gonna even consider entertaining a waiver request for this, I would suggest, one, there should be data presented, two, um, support their position of, of the number of parking spaces. Um, alternatively, there's again, allocation of space. Um, there is a provision in the zoning bylaw that allows for the reserved parking spaces whereby spaces allocated, but they're not necess, uh, the spaces aren't constructed right now. But if there was determined to be a need, um, the space is there, the parking space is, the, lane has been set aside and parking space is constructed. I figured there'd be more discussion on the waiver requests for the parking as well as other requests, uh, waiver requests, so I didn't go into great detail.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, in, in evening of waivers.
Looking forward to it.
Did you want to?
Yeah, I just have a question.
Oh, my, oh, my, don't they? Um, thank you, uh, Chair. I just have a question going back to, uh, number thirty-one, thirty and thirty-one. I think the key point there is whatever takes place there. I think your last sentence is, you recommend that the drainage system in the easement not be altered unless the alterations result in the drainage system functioning in the same manner as in the existing conditions and that the DPW be solicited for comments. And because we're dropping excess water above the elevation of three-fourteen-five to three-eleven, so there is an effect there if they do things in that.
Yep, there is an effect based on what the plan showed up. And that's what I'm thinking.
Chairman, since we're on that topic, if I may?
Uh, may, may I, I'm excited, sure.
Actually, I'm done.
Uh, just, I know we hooked up these today and we'll be preparing for more responses, but just for the records, as we're discussing it, we have a intention to make the revisions to ensure that that drainage system through that easement operates as intended. So we will make those revisions accordingly. And when it comes, um, to the details of that easement, uh, if the town were, the town's rights are only in that easement, so access would be from, directly from Pleasant Street. That'd be very difficult. So, um, with the work that's proposed within the easement on land that will be owned by the applicant, we believe that the access to the easement would be approved. So we can get into those details as, you know, as part of our responses. If we do hear from DPW, I'm sure we'll evaluate that. The two-to-one slope comment is, is very valid. We will look to address that. Um, but just wanted to recognize that we're looking to, to not make alterations to the function of that kind of unique situation there. Um, and if anything, we'll to improve its access for future maintenance by the town.
So I'll just comment, um, you know, you said if you hear from DP, if you hear from DPW, my, my hope and suggestion is, listen.
We have or we will specifically about this issue?
Okay, and then the other thing is, um, how, how wide is the easement?
Twenty feet. It's interesting because the manhole closest to Pleasant Street shows a thirty-inch pipe, but the catch basin on the low end shows a twelve. So somewhere near the end of that pipe, there's some transition that occurs, which makes sense because you probably wanna, you know, choke it down, so to speak, so water stays in the thirty inches as long as can to get that recharge effect, but then have the ability for it to overflow through the twelve up and out the top of the catch basin. It looks like it's in need of some improvements, as maybe Jeff noted, um, but interesting design. Something I haven't seen in my years. In those soil conditions, probably pretty effective.
Okay, um, any other comments? I mean, again, we've all just received this tonight, so, anything else you wanna address?
No, I think in general, uh, you know, we look to address all of, uh, the review comments. It requires some minor plan revisions, but, you know, really nothing major, you know, the hillbreakers that we see. You know, um, our intentions are to have a vertical curve along Pleasant Street with a raised, you know, sidewalk above the elevation of the street. Part of the flooding then that a water on Peter's Way realizes sometimes times also from the runoff of Pleasant Street on, on that side of the road, on the project side of the road. So the curb will benefit then. If you look at the topography on the plan, it does look like it has a tendency to puddle. We looked very close, did some additional topographic survey and from our standpoint, it looks like it will make its way down Pleasant Street heading towards Peter's Way. But, you know, we can, we can provide some micro topography information in there and we can evaluate that. And no one wants it to puddle.
Yep, okay. Uh, any other questions or comments from the board, Mr. Yomans?
Yes, thank you.
Mark phone?
No, Michael, don't scare him. Thank you, Peter. Um, thank you, Peter. Uh, number twenty-nine, Jeff, would you just comment on that? That's a, that's a statement that's made relative to the public water supply. Would you just explain that point, please?
Certainly, under number twenty-nine, uh, Mass DEP has, um, ten standards for stormwater management. Uh, of three or four would require calculations. This one is the calculation for what's called water quality. How much stormwater is actually treated through a treatment train? Catch basins discharged to a stormwater four base, which is the inlet end, and then discharged into the main basin and adequately treated. DEP says you have to treat under, under any circumstance except for critical areas such as being in the zone two. You have to treat one-half of, one-half inch of runoff times the impervious area. You have to treat that volume of runoff. So it's a half an inch times so many square feet, you can, you convert it to cubic feet and you have to treat at least that much. That's what the calculation's all about. And then for critical areas such as being in the zone two, bathing beaches, cold water fisheries, you have to treat one inch runoff times the impervious area at a minimum or twice as much as, and that's what the comment is all about. Um, the calculation was based on a half an inch. But I can tell you when they change a calculation, they treat more than an inch of runoff times the impervious area. This, this comment, number twenty-nine, is for the record.
Okay.
Is, is all that is.
Thank you. Other comments in the board?
Um, going towards Hudson Ave, the Water District owned land, they sold a lot of it and I am not positive they still, they drilled some wells, say, years ago. They turned out to be basically duds and they never, I don't know if they still own that land or not. Is that, would that be a concern if they still own that land and wanted to try to drill again? Um, and I don't know how many feet away it is. It's probably from fifty-nine to Hudson, it's probably halfway there to Hudson.
I wasn't familiar with the, um, Water District or, or any of that you, that you explained, but thank you for explaining it. Um, as, as I see it, if the Water District was gonna develop a new supply of water, they'd have to look at what's around them and to prohibit any landowner from utilizing their land um, with the possibility that another landowner might develop their land and it'd be in conflict. I, you know, if it was an existing water supply, it'd be a different story.
Right.
But I don't see that, um, how this, this applicant would be burdened or any applicant in the neighborhood or any developer would be burdened with the potential of what might happen to somebody else's land.
Um, to Katrina, we've solicited comments from the Water District? So they've had an opportunity to comment?
Yes.
In theory, they had their sights on something that you, you should...
They did this years ago.
Yeah, no, I understand.
It never went anywhere.
And there was, off of Institute Road, they had done some work as well. There was a subdivision up there that had a lot of good wells.
Okay, uh, anyone from the public here to comment? Uh, so...
I'll get it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, sorry.
That's good.
Hi, Nancy Pocomi, three Highline Drive. Um, I just have a couple of questions. I'm obviously not from the Pleasant Street area, but I am very familiar with the forty-B process, um, in this town. Um, I'd like to know, is there going to be any state supervision of this forty-B project? Unlike the one I'm familiar with?
Uh, you know, I, Dan can probably elaborate more, but I believe the state really only oversees the regulatory agreements and the affordability aspects and things like that to make sure that, you know, that those parts are implemented. As far as actually building, you know, no, it's, it's subject to the bill, the state building codes that are enforcing, or building spectrum would need to enforce. But as far as the state overseeing, the state doesn't oversee forty-B developments in any way other than, you know, the affordability issues.
Yeah, I think that's right. Maybe, is there a particular component of the project you're talking about? I mean, that, you said very broadly, you know, they oversee...
Well, I mean, I could be more specific. I mean, the drainage, definitely, um, stormwater drainage. I mean, obviously I've had a massive problem with that and unfortunately, um, the, the feedback and the, when, when I complained, um, you know, I wanted to go above the town level, um, with the proof and everything that I had, there was no avenue above the town level to go to regarding any kind of, uh, compliance with the comprehensive permit. I mean, there are, in my particular situation in the neighborhood that I live in, there are a lot of things that did not comply with the, the comprehensive permit. Um, I brought many of them up. I tried to go to different state agencies and really you just reach a, a solid dead end except for this table right here. You have Dan Howe, Mr. Walsh and Bob Berger, and that's it. If, if you, if there's a problem and things aren't getting done and the drainage starts affecting people's property and, you know, badly, um, there's no repercussions. I mean, is there a bond in place or, or some kind of reassurance in place that this project, one, gets completed and then gets completed properly without affecting the rest of the neighborhood detrimentally? Because, I mean, as you all know at this table and maybe the people behind me don't know, but, I mean, I'm in a terrible situation. And it's been going on for eleven years since I made my first complaint. The neighborhood proceeded around me, things did not get fixed. I am the one suffering. Um, so I just really am concerned for the people in this area where they're obviously so concerned that they have all come out to these multiple meetings. What's their protection for that? How do...
Yeah, Nancy, you know, obviously we're aware and there's actually pending litigation.
I understand, so I'm not being specific.
We need to, especially, some of us at the state, we need to be very careful with that. But I don't think that there's really any difference in, in the oversight that you're referring to between your project and this project or any other project in town or for that matter, probably any other project.
So it'd be the same process, peer review and...
Yeah.
The same complaint process of the, the little three-by-five card?
I, I actually don't know what the complaint process is.
No, nobody knows what the complaint process is until you fill out this magical three-by-five card. Because I went to every office in the Town Hall, every single one, before I got to, I believe the Board of Health, and she gave me a little three-by-five card that I could barely fit my complaint on and then there was action.
Yeah.
Years and years later, but I don't want these people to go through what I went through.
I, I understand that. And specifically, you, you mentioned bond. There will be some sort of a bond for the drainage and you know that that's actually in play in High Point.
Right.
Um, so, you know, there will be that.
Right.
Right, and, and, you know, I think this board has demonstrated that, you know, we've, we've actually gone to great lengths to protect High Point.
I do, I do understand that. I just...
But the, the process will be the same. It really isn't anything else.
The only thing I'd like to clarify though is, I was flooded in my neighborhood and then the developer sued me. And now I have been, they sued me. It's like a burglar breaking into your house and maybe, you know, cutting himself on the window and then he sues you for the hospital bill. So I've been in litigation now for four years with the developer. And, and with no, uh, look, everybody has done what they could do. I, I, I get it. Here at the table, um, and over at this table, um, I get it. But it doesn't leave me in a, in a good situation. And unfortunately, if things go wrong with this project on Pleasant Street, I just wanted to make sure that the people are protected and they don't have to, I mean, you know, High Point's been going on, was forced by the town and has been going on for twenty-five years and it is not closed. The road is open. It's a private road still and it's unfortunate. And I just don't want to see this happen again with a forty-B that's unfortunately being forced in the same manner. So, thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. Just, just to address some of those concerns, I think we've...
Oh, yeah.
We, if you've paid attention to any of our prior meetings over the last six months or a year, um, many of those meetings have related to, and there was the first item on the agenda this evening, related to Fisher Bill, which is a, a forty-B. Um, and that, that hasn't gone smoothly, but there's been a tremendous amount of oversight on that project, um, involving this board, which I don't know if that's happened on other, um, forty-B projects to that extent, but, you know, it, it, there's a lot of eyes on it and I don't know if that stems from, you know, what evolved at High Point or not, but I think there's more consciousness of that and, and holding developers accountable to what's in the comprehensive permit.
Anyone else?
Hi, Shannon Martin, sixteen Sunrise Ave. I just have a question, um, in regards to the drainage. Is there any contingency if it overflows into like the Sunrise Ave? When Peter's Way was built, there was some difficulty and we have one of those big easement drains. So just wondering how far will that contingency plan cover? Is it just for kind of what sits behind? Or like where that other pieces that kind of butts, butts up against the Sunrise Ave development?
A little bit of what you're asking is almost what Nancy was asking. I don't feel, Steve, you are the same. Or you need to share the same microphone?
So if I'm not mistaken, this is Sunrise, right? This is Little Joy's, this is Joyce's and this is Sunrise. So, the stormwater system with the topography and everything else is, is directed towards this, this pond.
Okay.
So, I'll never say anything's impossible. But it's near impossible, um, that you'd ever see any related drainage impacts whatsoever, Sunrise.
Because when Peter's Way was built, like in the process of it being built, there was a lot of issues in our part of Sunrise Ave, so I know we can't predict everything. I just didn't know. Cause the focus is kind of on that area. If it were to carry over, like, can there be a backup plan or, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I don't know the details of, of the Peter Drive situation, but what I do know is the topography here would probably allow, encourage a stormwater discharge to come this way, which does head towards Sunrise. That's not the same situation here. This goes directly to the pond way over here, which is significantly lower than even the cul-de-sac of Joyce and...
Okay.
Good question.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add, you know, it shouldn't be a problem, right? But I think this is true for any development and for anyone in this room. You know, if, if you notice something that's not right as this is happening, you gotta bring it to the attention of our zone enforcement officer and, and put the pressure on. And, you know, I think that, um, Mr. Waller has some really good points about how things were handled with High Point. And I know the town has learned, not just through forty-B but through other developments as well, that it needs to be more diligent and I think the town has gotten better about that diligence when it comes to these developers. So, um, you know, it's, unfortunately it's not a perfect world, but, you know, we, we tried to put some controls in place. Somebody else have their, yeah?
Sorry, if I may, I just, I just wanted to confirm what Steve O'Connell said about the topography and very big difference in the topography at the end of the cul-de-sac of Peter's Way versus the, um, back of the number fifty-nine as far as number fifty-nine has that pond and the, and the overflow or, or similar situation that might have occurred. And the overflow or similar situation that might have occurred at Peter's Way cul-de-sac would be directed to the pond at number 59.
John Morrow, 54 Pleasant. I know I brought this up the last time, but I, just speaking of that back land, that's the town's problem after its quitclaim deed into the town, correct? It wouldn't be the developer's problem anymore. I think if the developer is causing the problem, it's, that's the developer's problem.
But if it affects?
If the developer puts land onto, water onto your property, that's not your problem, that's the developer's problem. Okay. But I'm just saying, if you, the town now is involved, because it's their land. Okay. Again, I wanted to see if we can get Mr. Walsh's take on?
John, closer to the.
I'm sorry. The, the development numbers when it comes to impervious surface, density, parking, are all based on 12.41 acres, correct?
With respect to how much percentage of the lot would be covered by impervious, that is correct.
But the land is gonna be, it's quitclaim. In other words, they have no use for it. It's being given to the town. So how do, how do we use that land in our couts and then get rid of it?
That's my point. And there are ways to deal with it. For example, the intention here is, in the zoning bylaw, the regulation, as I interpret it, is the intention is to not cover certain impervious area, certain percentage of the lot with impervious area to promote infiltration. If the land is deeded to the town and remains undeveloped, physically, the same thing's occurring. But my point is, I'm interested in learning whether the 40B development can stand on its own merits with the donated portion going away. Or if the donated portion going away, perhaps would need a deed restriction that prohibits or limits the amount of impervious area, because that's quote-unquote credit land that is needed to make the 40B a viable project. And that's how I see it.
I, good. I just wanted that brought up again, because we really didn't get to any conclusion with it when I brought it up the first time.
And, and it's a simple calculation, but it's not my job to put it forward. That's why I commented on it, so it can be put in the record by the developers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to comment? Go up.
Lindsay Fox, 61 Sunrise Ave. I'm sorry. Lindsay Fox, 61 Sunrise Ave. I just had a question. Well, this, does this project trigger a MEBR review? Because it was a land transfer from agricultural land to residential land? I don't know if anybody knows that answer.
I haven't looked at the MEBR thresholds on this. I don't know if the Alpines.
No MEBR.
Yeah. Generally, a project of this size would not trigger MEBR.
Okay.
I think you generally have to have a lot more parking or sewer connection service and things like that.
Okay. Even if it had to?
If you think there's something there, you can feel free to tell us.
Yeah, I was just curious about that. And I mean, if there's a question of, like, if their, if their project requires a variance for, you know, from wetland protection, is that something that's part of? Is that something that would be?
So.
Would trigger a MEBR review?
No, it wouldn't trigger MEBR review. But that is a topic I wanted to bring up at some point, because I don't think the wetland waiver requests are really, were really well done properly. And I think that needs some work. The state wetland law cannot be waived under 40B. But the local wetland bylaw can be waived, but it doesn't have to be waived. So the board makes a decision upon receiving input and opinions from people in the audience, as well as the Conservation Commission and engineers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Wendy Reed, 14 Kennedy Road. I'm reluctant to even get up and say anything, because everything I was gonna say seems like useless, since the decision has already been made.
It hasn't been made.
To build something?
It hasn't been made.
Because I understand.
So, so it's a legitimate comment, right? So let's be really clear. What I had, what I had said is, the, the job of the ZBA at this point is to try to form this into as good a project as possible. And I know there's some in the audience who may think that that's an oxymoron, but we need to try and make this as good as we can, okay? So that's really kind of our role right now. So that's where we need input. That's where we need engineers review. We need to, you know, do their things. And we can put conditions and we can, we can ask the developer to do things, right? But you have to approach it from the point of view of, it's gonna get built, so what can we do? What bothers me about this project? And what can we do to address what it is that bothers me? So that's why I say, assume it's gonna get built. What is the concern? What are the risks? What can we do to mitigate those concerns? We still have the option to deny it. We still have the options, change it. We, you know, whether, whether our denial would stand up at hack, whether our changes would stand up at hack, hacking House of Appeals. Who knows? But all I was saying is, approach it from the point of view of, something's gonna get built. Now, what can we do? What is it that you don't like about it, besides just the fact that it exists? What specifically do you not like about it? And what can we do to try to address that? That's, that's the point I was trying to make.
Oh, I feel better already. Is this working?
Yes.
Okay. I understand the frustrations of the people who left. I know from the last meeting that one of those people lives on an intersection of 122 and Pleasant Street. From my house, I could see that intersection, and I see the traffic backup, especially morning and evening commutes and when the high school gets out. But I'm less concerned about that than I am about the impact this is going to have on the wildlife that lives in that area, because that's a big chunk of land that's being used by a lot of species of wildlife right now. And when you build something like that, it affects the adjacent wildlife areas. It's gonna be noise, it's gonna be chemicals. And there'll be a lot more human activity around there. So we seem to be pushing all the wildlife out of town. It's changing the character of the, our nice little village is turning into something else from all this new construction. So that's my comment and my big concern. It's a lovely field, and it's home to a lot of animals. There are bald eagles down there. There are river otters in that pond. There are pileated woodpeckers, which are quite rare. So we need to consider that we are also stewards of the land. And we keep taking away all the places where these animals live, so they're gonna wind up in people's backyards where they're just gonna be displaced altogether. So I'd just like us to consider that and make the decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Catherine, the penny for Christopher Drive. Is there gonna be discussion again about the design and the scope and the look of the buildings? I think there was something, or was it the last time, by the board?
I don't necessarily remember specifically, you know, talking about the designs and what could it be?
What, like the flat?
Actually, no, you're absolutely right. Thank you. Yeah, I think that is something, that's something I said mind out, so we really kind of want to address as yet, get the flat rules and the, and that look of the buildings.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we will get there.
Yeah, the overall scale of, like, four massive apartment complexes and single-family residential area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, that, that will actually absolutely be addressed.
Okay, and then the traffic issues?
So then the traffic, I think one of the things we're gonna talk about when we conclude the input right now is engaging a traffic consultant to review their traffic study. Is your traffic study done? You up there?
Very close.
Okay. So once, once they have the updated traffic study done, then we'll have a peer review similar to what Mr. Walsh did with the architectural and the site plans. He'll do with the traffic study and then we'll get input. And one of the things that I intend to do is ask that, that engineer review these recordings tonight and the previous night, so he get all of the input from the, from the meeting, from everyone who's saying what they're saying. So, yeah. So that, that will happen. There will be a meeting probably that'll focus a lot on traffic.
All right, and then the overall design of the buildings and the situation and density.
Like, I think at some point, we, you know, once we've kind of accumulated all of this various input and had our peer reviews, the board will offer suggestions and requests and things like that. Some of this may come out as we just start talking. Some of the labels we're asking for, things along those lines, and changes we'd like them to make. And that will, that will get addressed. Jeff? Yes. Yeah.
Just because it was mentioned, and I didn't want to forget to get back to it. You know, I think we talked about this at the first public hearing, is dedicating meetings to topics. So the way I see this going, based on the sequence of kind of where we're at, we touched on civil tonight, civil site. That'll, that'll resume based on revisions and follow-up review, department heads. And then I think right on the heels of that would be traffic. The, the new counts and updated counts were completed. They're just updating the document itself. And then obviously, hopefully, there's a discussion, decision about pay review for traffic. And then I think the remaining items that would follow would be building, design, building, architecture, waivers, which you mentioned, and then eventually, some sort of decision document, whatever that may look like. So I think it would be fair to everybody to be prepared for applicant abutters to know what will be discussed at upcoming meetings. I think you agree, I just wanted to.
Yeah, I mean, what you just said is roughly how things tend to go.
Right.
There could be a full formal review in there somewhere as well.
True.
But, yeah, I think that's roughly how it goes. Any other comments? Okay, so, can, let's say more specifically, what is the status of the updated traffic? Do you want to just grab the microphone?
So the updated study and report will be ready by before the end of this month. It'll be distributed as soon as it's ready. But depending on upcoming meeting schedule and time, that's why I thought it'd be fair to the traffic reviewer to have more time than what would probably be allowed before the next meeting, which I think we would discuss, continue to discuss civil. Perhaps department-related comments. We can talk a little bit about traffic, but I don't think it'll be a dedicated.
No, 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 it sounds like it would be presented before then, and then we can engage. Okay.
So, a quick question. Two seconds?
Okay.
Just, is there something on the traffic study? Yeah. Are you probably talking loud?
No. Bill's gonna yell at me if he do that.
Jeff McGrath, Ford Peters Way. For the traffic study, the first one was done during COVID. Everything was shut down, is that correct? So is that gonna be wiped off the plate?
Basically.
And then the last?
That's what I'm saying, right? You're doing, you're doing, you've got new counts.
Yeah, we'll look at it. Yeah. And then the last one was done on a holiday weekend?
Yeah.
I saw all things up on the, on the polls. I just, I don't know if that was it, and I'm pretty sure it was. Did I show the dates?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah.
Eight times.
Okay. That's all.
I have a similar question about that. Shouldn't, shouldn't? Jim from Potters, 39 Pleasant Street, that's a similar problem with the traffic. I leave my house at 5:00 every morning to go to work. And I have to look both ways three times, because someone's gonna come flying down the road at 90 miles an hour. People use it from Sutton. They use Pleasant Street as a cutoff to cut across. So in the morning, it's, there's traffic. At, at, in the evening, when I get home from work, there's traffic. It's a very small road, very narrow country road. I don't see how you're gonna add 200 more cars without being massive problems. If you leave anytime near rush hour, let's say from when school gets out till about 6:00 at night, Pleasant Street backs up all the way past where Pullard is with traffic. A lot of people try and use Hudson, that backs up. As far as the survey for cars, for traffic, it was up for a very short time. I wouldn't imagine a better indicator for the amount of traffic on that road is if they did it for a sustained period. Maybe for a couple of weeks, is that possible? Or, or a full week? So you get Monday through Sunday's traffic, because I feel that it was, the, the machine was up for a very short period of time. And as a matter of fact, outside my house, there's a corner of Pleasant Street. So you can't really see what's coming on the right or the left. And as I say, people come flying down there. Someone's gonna get hurt. There's been a couple of dogs already killed. As a matter of fact, outside my street, it's zoned 25 miles an hour. No one goes 25 miles. I go 25 miles, and I, when I pull up, and I have people beeping their arms out behind me because I'm going slower. So the traffic is a very major concern for, for me, not only because I live there, but because there's children on the street, there's people that jog on that street, there's people that walk on that street, there's people that bike on that street. There's, you know, people walking their dogs. It's, I just, that's my concern. Thank you for. What question again? Jim from Potters.
Okay. So let, let me just try to address this a little bit. Okay, so we could try to condition this permit and lower the density because traffic's bad, right? Or we could maybe deny it because traffic's bad. But when it gets to the appeal phase, we have to have technical supporting documentation, engineering data, or some sort of technical data. We can't just say, Jim from Grafton says the traffic's bad, right? And Jim and all of his neighbors and everyone in the room says traffic's bad. That's not gonna cut it in front of the Housing and Appeals Committee, right? I mean, we all live here. I think all of us drive. I know I drive Pleasant Street. I know exactly what you're saying. It's a, it's a, it's a tough street. It's narrow, it's windy, it's busy at the ends. I, we're aware of that. But the Housing and Appeals Committee, quite frankly, doesn't care. But that's why, hey, hey, that's why we need to have the technical data. So they're doing a traffic study, then we need to get a traffic review. And what you're saying, those questions, I, I don't know. I mean, it seems bad to me, it seems bad. That the reviewer?
The amount of, the scope of the study and the amount of time that the traffic was measured, that would be in the review?
These are questions that would be good for our peer review, because none of us are professional traffic people. That's why we hire the peer review. So these are legitimate questions. Right. So that would be appropriate questions for the peer reviewer that comes. That's, that's what I'm saying. So, I mean, I, I, we all understand what you're saying about traffic. We get it. At least I do, I'm sure, and we all do, because we all, you know, travel that road at one time or another. But we really need the engineering data to support any sort of claim to take any sort of action based on traffic.
And would the engineering data take into account people that walk?
Those are all questions. Probably two meetings down the road.
Okay, I'm there. I'll be there.
Please, that would be great.
Be good to take pictures of the traffic backed up on Pleasant Street?
Bill's gonna start yelling at me, because you're talking too much. You're having to go up on the mic. But all of, all of what you're saying, please, would be best handled at the, when, when the peer review consultant's there. Okay. We're worried.
So, Mr.?
Yes.
So I should call this the traffic. I wanna talk about the other issues that the board really should be reviewing during this course of this application, this hearing.
Yep.
I wanna talk about that in timing, in sequence, because we have a lot to review in a short period of time. So I first want to start with traffic and just to address the concern that was raised. Yes, the original study was done during the COVID. The data collection happened during COVID. That probably wouldn't affect the speeds. If anything, speeds were maybe higher during COVID, That probably wouldn't affect the speeds, if anything, speeds were maybe higher during COVID because there was less cars in the road. So the traffic engineers that I talked to say that the speeds weren't any less during COVID than they were after COVID. What's different is the trip counts, so people, less people were driving around, right? So that, and, and it's actually, the, the traffic engineering industry has come up with adjustment factors to apply to, to trip generation data collection that was, that happened during COVID. Sort of the words, there's an agreement among traffic engineers that if you, if you were collecting trip data during COVID, you'd apply a factor of X to those numbers. Now, that's not enough for us, so that's why we're getting additional trip counts. So we're actually gonna have two data points, not one, which is actually more than we usually have for any kind of project. And I can tell you that it's very common for the, the, the data collected in these traffic studies to be done over the course of two or three days. It's just, it's, it's pretty standard. If it's, if we think, and our traffic engineer thinks that there's a need to collect data on a weekend, and this wasn't collected on a weekend, we can have them go back out there and put up new... Believe it or not, this is actually super cheap. It costs like five hundred dollars for them to go out and put these, these tubes on the ground and collect data for about two or three days, it's that cheap. So if we think it's necessary to go out and collect more data, and the board agrees, the board can just ask them to do that. I wanna turn back to traffic, but I also wanna just address what I think are a couple other issues. So on the wetland issues, I think I asked a question and raised this question at the last hearing about the pond. If this pond was on the project site, we'd have a long form information about it, you could see it delineated, you know, this pond happens to be off-site, but it's within twenty-five feet of the stormwater infrastructure, tanning walls, and swales and so forth. There's typically a hundred-foot buffer around sensitive environmental resources like, like this pond. And so I think this is an issue that the board should look at. We have performance standards in the wetland bylaw that are more strict than state law. And I, I don't know who filled out the waiver requests for the wetland bylaw, but they're basically blanket requests, it just says waive this provision, and it's essentially the entire bylaw. So that's not really helpful to the board to understand what you actually need and what you don't need. Because I don't think you need probably eighty percent of the waiver requests that you're making. So I would recommend that the applicant provide the board with a refined waiver request list for the wetland bylaw in particular, and just tell us what you really need. And, because I think there's a lot of things in there that you're already complying with. And I think the board really needs to pay close attention to the performance standards. You know, what are the performance standards in the bylaw that are different and that you're asking or need a waiver from? I have the little, and, and I think, you know, some of the comments tonight about wildlife, you can see the plan, I mean, it's... That pond is, is really close to the field, and I can imagine, the buffer areas are known as areas for habitat, for foraging, for overwintering. Buffer areas to ponds are, are very important to wildlife. And that's not, me saying it, it's in the Mass Association Conservation Commission's Buffer Zone Handbook. That's why the state law requires a hundred-foot buffer with performance standards in it. So I, I think, I think it's, it, it might be appropriate for the board to have a wetland scientist review this project during this stage. The project will need an order of conditions from, from the Conservation Commission, so this isn't the end of the road. This project still has to go to the Forest Conservation Commission for permission. But where there's so much activity, really very close to this pond that's on town property, I, I, I would recommend that consider having a wetland scientist review that aspect of this project. Particularly water quality, where you've got basically all the stormwater, and Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, all of the stormwater that's hitting impervious surfaces, which include a lot of road surface, you know, parking lot surface, is being put into a basin that essentially is discharging runoff right at the pond, twenty-five feet away, with a steep slope, right? I mean, it's not, I mean, typically, you want buffer areas to be flat, not steep. Because the buffer area provides a water quality function. As water, as dirty runoff goes through the buffer, the buffer cleans it. That doesn't happen when the buffer is steep and is degraded. So, you know, there's, there's lots of good wetland scientists that provide peer review work in towns. I don't know, have, have we hired some in the past for 40B projects? I feel we have.
I think we have.
There's Pat Carter, who's in Northborough, Marty Novar, she's in Orange, the Mirberg.
The Conservation Commission has a, has a consultant that's very good at...
Arthur, Arthur Allen?
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. So, anyway. All right, so that's, that's recommendation number one. Stormwater, and this is a big question for Jeff, I didn't have a chance to read this before tonight, but I, and I don't know if... Does the town have performance standards in the stormwater bylaw that are more strict than state law?
There's, other re, there's, the performance standards are basically the same. They get into some more detailed stuff such as conveyance velocities and so forth. But on the rainfall data side, for the hydrology calculations in the local stormwater, they call for the Cornell NRCC rainfall data, which is much greater than the tech, is what the state is still requiring, which is called Technical Paper Forty. I can tell you that the hydrology calculations run to this, using NRCC numbers, are very, very, very close to... They're much, if, if they're off, they're off just a fraction of a percent, especially, maybe just a hundred feet of storm. So to your point of them complying with most of the local regulations, I agree. I think most of the regulations probably already comply, and, and I'd be very interested in discussing what waivers really are needed under both the local stormwater rates and the weather rates, because we would be both, yeah, the pond con as well.
Yeah, and that's helpful, and the, the board usually relies on people like Jeff and Arthur Allen to tell us where this project complies and does comply, whether they ask for a waiver or not.
Yep.
Because you need to know that. So this kind of goes back now to traffic and timing, and I, I'm, I'm a little concerned that the traffic report isn't done. I, I think I kind of expected that to be done by tonight, and that we would have hired the peer reviewer for traffic, and then the peer reviewer would have started, go up and running, and by the next meeting, we would have had a peer review report. So, you know, we only have six months, and we were quarter-month in. So I, you know, I, I think it might be appropriate for the board to ask the applicant to grant a, a one-month extension at this point to the six-month period of time, given that the traffic report incompleteness was really on them. So, and, and that, I think that'd be appropriate so that the board has sufficient time to review all the information. And I would encourage the board to also hire the traffic peer reviewer tonight, and then just authorize the traffic peer reviewer to start as soon as that comes in, not wait until the next meeting. I, I think it's possible we could have a traffic peer review report at the next meeting, if this report comes in next week, and your next meeting is mid-June.
I, I, I agree. Although, do we need to have some sort of a statement work or an outline or something, you know, defined? I mean, you know...
Yeah, I, I can draft something, and if the applicant is agreeable, we can, they can just nod their head tonight and say, you guys can proceed, and, I mean, do, you wanna talk about the... I did solicit, I did try to find some people, and we got one response essentially from an engineer who's well-respected, and I can recommend it.
Yeah, so, yeah, Dan had solicited some input, and Dan has a recommendation, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the name, and then there is a, a different engineer who the town has used in, in the past as well. I'm personally, in just from the conversation Dan and I had, he, he was leaning towards the one he recommended because it tends, it tends to be more town-oriented as opposed to developer-oriented. You know, so I, you know, I would like to see us hire the one that Dan has recommended. He had actually put forth, and I don't know if you have a copy or a, a statement work or an outline. The only thing I would add to it is that, you know, I would like to have that person review, as I said before, the tape from the last meeting and this meeting. So part of his, you know, part of his review is actually listen to what, you know, what folks in the town have to say. But, you know, I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts on it, but I, I, I like that idea, let's get them engaged as soon as possible, we can, we can do it.
Yeah, and the, and the, the engineer is Kevin Dandray, from Tech T E C.
Oh, hi.
Yeah, 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 okay. And they do peer review work, Oxford, what was it, a couple towns he gave us referrals from?
Oxford is one, I can't remember the second.
Uh, Wayland, so I live in Wayland, I'm the planning board there, and he's done work for us, and happy with it.
So for the record, we don't, we don't object to hiring a peer reviewer, you know, team that up, just so it's, so it's done. We will inquire with our traffic consultant tomorrow. You know, we did expand the count area as requested.
Yep.
We're adding information regarding parking counts that came up tonight. So there are things that are being expanded upon, it's not just, you know, put some new traffic counts in, issue, you know, a new report. So I think it will appreciate what is gonna be expanded upon. So yeah, no objection for the traffic consultant to hire. So this is the, the proposal on screen.
I can email it to you guys, too.
Yeah, so I, you know, when, when I had seen this, looked at it, seemed fine to me, except like, so I would like that, and then do, do use the, the recordings for the news.
Oh, gotcha.
Oh, yeah. So, so this, um, scope of work is just a peer review of their traffic report? And if Tech comes back and finds that the report that they have done, that the applicant has done is insufficient, do, do they then do their own traffic study, or how does that proceed after?
No, so, good question, so, so our peer reviewer will look at sort of two things. First, is this, is, is the developers' traffic study adequate? Does it, does it lead... There's actually a state guideline that dictates what traffic reports are supposed to contain, with all these components to it. So one of the things Kevin would do is say, well, you know, this, this study area isn't big enough, you know, or you didn't collect site distance information, or whatever it is, and so that's sort of a process thing. And then Kevin will also look at the substance and evaluate what the study's data concludes, and whether that's compelling, if there's any flaws or deficiencies. And either, on either count, the board can then take Kevin's recommendations and then turn back to the applicant, say, fix it, and basically have the applicant amend the study. But we can't do our own study. Under 40B law, the board cannot, I mean, the town could, the town could hire an engineer to buy input to the board as, as a interested party, but the board itself cannot go out and hire an engineer to do a study.
Um, right. Well, one thing that you didn't address is, is a request for an extension, you know.
I think it's a little early for that. I think we're opposed if we get a little further down the line, and I think it's a little early personally to grant extensions.
Bill? Mr. Allen's?
A question of Dan.
Microphone, microphone.
Excuse me, thank you. Uh, thank you. A question of Dan. Does the time taken for the appeal for the safe harbor, does that... Does the clock stop from them denying the appeal six months out, or is that included in the six months?
Oh, you mean the, the time between the... Yes, no, you're right, the, the time from their appeal to the D H C decision told the six-month period. But that was only a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks, yeah.
I have a couple of other comments.
I would love, we're good, I, I do wanna talk about the, the wetlands issue. So first of all, this board, you guys actually didn't go through the process for, for Almiron, but this board, and, you know, I've been involved in, I think, ten or eleven 40Bs now. We really don't, we, we really don't do anything, we don't like these blanket waivers, right? So any waiver is gonna have something specific, you know, specifically why you need it and that sort of thing. So I haven't even looked at the waivers yet, just, I know that sometimes they do change before we get to that point. If there's a lot of blanket stuff in there, then, you know, maybe there should be a second pass through it.
We don't, we don't do that.
You know, and, you know, I, I, I do like the idea of a wetlands review. You know, that is something that I, I think that's gonna be very important for this particular project. But if, I suppose if we get to the point where maybe you don't have any waiver requests, you know, maybe it kind of changes. So, you know, I, I, I don't know that we need to decide that now, tonight, and correct me if I'm wrong there, but maybe, you know, it's something that we're gonna have to adjust probably by the next meeting.
So just for the board's information, we were waiting for a grace review, for peer revisions, use those revisions to make our conservation final. Kind of helps streamline a little bit of the process, so, you know, conservation isn't performing multiple reviews on things that change. So the timing is great that we received these, these revisions seem very, you know, quick and reasonable. So we will make them, we'll file with conservation, we will let that process follow its normal course of action. In the meantime, as part of our filing with conservation, we will detail revised waivers, specifically for stormwater and wetland bylaw, I think, any of that blanket, specifically those. And then, I think you're right, you know, I, you know, everyone who spoke on this topic, I, I think at the end of the day, probably won't have that many waivers in those categories. Stormwater specifically, we use Cornell runoff because we know we're in Grafton, and that's what you like. And, you know, we're using that actually most places now. So that, that's a big, you know, a big component of the bylaw, but other factors too were incorporated. So I think you'll see that there may not even be any stormwater waivers, and refine the list.
Okay.
Beth Bosson, Fifty-Four Pleasant. Questioning Jeff and Dan on, she brought up wildlife, the other girl brought up meba. The impervious area.
Bath closer to the lake.
The impervious area of this project, how are they going to, when they plow, and sand or salt? Where's that gonna run off to? And is this great runoff thing going to take care of the salt that's going to go into the wetlands? Going to destroy our bald eagles? I mean, I've got pictures of them, they're right outside my house, you know? We've got salamanders, everybody's seeing them. So where does all the, the winter stuff, salt brought in from cars? You know, people cleaning their cars in the driveways, you know, we do it, but where's it gonna go?
I think Jeff can, can address that.
So...
With respect to, that, that speaks to water quality, and that's one of the standards, standard number four in the Mass DEP, that they have certain criteria to meet. And you're right, there's salt used, sand is not used as, at least by municipal alleys, sand is not used as much as it used to be. So they rely even more heavily now on salt, which can be problematic for water supplies. But nevertheless, that's with, we spoke earlier tonight about the calculation, the one-inch of runoff and storing waterfall volume, that is how that's addressed. The state doesn't get more specific about it.
Yeah, but it's gonna go so on.
That's right.
That's a state standard.
That's a state standard.
So they have to meet that, it really doesn't even get, we don't get involved with it, I mean, they can't, we can't waive something there.
Right, can't waive something, there, I hate to say it this way, but basically what the state did, before about ninety-five or so, they didn't have stormwater standards. And, you know, it was, when I went to college, we learned about hydrology and reducing peak rates of runoff so they don't get exceeded, and that was it. Now the state talks to discharges that aren't corrosive, that's standard number one. Peak rates of runoff, standard number two. Brown water recharge is standard number three, and water quality is standard number four. So standards number one, three, and four weren't even discussed when I was in college in the eighties. At least the stormwater handbook and the standards started something. And it's, I hate to say it's dummy down, but the total suspended solids calculations are a, I, a cookbook method, very clear in the handbook that any engineer anywhere in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts can follow it. And it's working, and it's a lot better than pre-1995. I've gotten a stormwater report from a PhD engineer, and I was reading a college dissertation. Quite frankly, that's why Mass DEP, I won't hate to say it, dummied it down and made it work. So that's one answer to a very simple question, where's the salt and sand gonna go? The salt and sand is gonna go where the runoff goes, it's gonna go through the catch basins, it's gonna go into the infiltration basins, it's gonna infiltrate into the soil, there'll be some absorption onto the soil, some absorption onto, onto vegetation, and probably the salt's gonna be diluted and goes down there. Not inconsistent with any other development project in Massachusetts.
It doesn't matter if it's not inconsistent or not. We're killing our world, we're killing our environment, we're pushing our animals out. And this whole project, everybody's talking about, well, they're giving the town back, and it's got the buffer... and it's got the buffer this and the buffer that. You, you're talking about a, a, what, how big is this square that they're gonna?
About twelve acres, the whole piece of land.
No, I don't, I don't care about the whole piece, I wanna know what they're building the impervious on. Six?
I think it's about seven and a half ish acres.
Okay.
Give or take.
Those seven and a half ish acres still house a lot of wildlife.
I don't dispute that.
And so what these book people are saying, they're sitting behind a desk, pushing a pencil. They don't care about the land, we do. And it's not that we're here saying that we don't want building, but that is a law. And I'm still concerned about the salt and, you know, well, let's kill the grass because, you know, people.
And the students. The engineer, we, we understand that my job as, as an engineer is to review the civil engineering aspects of this and report back to the board. To give this board information it can rely on to know whether or not the engineering meets accepted practices, regulations that are, that are applicable to what the board has jurisdiction over. And I try to do so in such a way, knowing that if an appeal is brought forward from either party, if I'm called to the stand, I can be on the stand and I can stand behind my review. And as much as I might have personal opinions one way or the other, I have to rely on the regulations, the standard engineering practices.
And, and, no, and we understand that, and that's, and, and to say this, and our, our hands are tied as well to, you know, state standards, et cetera. But that being said, you know, I mean, what can we do, Dan? And, and I kinda, I, I, I think that, like, I think it was High Point, we actually have something in there that says you're not supposed to use, um, lawn fertilizers. Now, I think we maybe got away with that because it's an area of critical environmental concern, I can't remember. But even still, you know, is Nancy still here? Did you know that that developer's not supposed to use lawn fertilizers? Yeah.
Did you know that all the, there's no pitch, tree to one and a wall over three years?
I think that's down. But, like, you know, so even, even if we, even if we put something in the comprehensive permit like that, then you get into a whole issue of enforcement. So, I don't know, can we say that they can't use salt on their roads in the winter? So we can say things like that, then there becomes a whole issue of enforcement. But, you know, so, so, I mean, I think these are, and I think some of these things are what a wetlands review would, would provide us. And I think we need that, right? We need somebody to come along and say those sorts of things.
Yeah, and I think I started this by saying, I, I think one of the concerns that I have is the design of the stormwater system. They have this, having this infiltration system that captures all the road runoff so close to a pond. I, I think that, to me, is a striking, that we have ponds dying across the state with deforestation, phosphorus and nitrogen. And that, that is definitely a concern. So, and that doesn't mean this project's dead, it just means that there might be a better design. Maybe they can infiltrate, instead of a centralized infiltration system, maybe they can do a dispersed infiltration design where you've got infiltration points all over the site, so it's not concentrated right against the pond.
Yep.
Or maybe there's enhanced treatment that can be used to take the salt out or to, to take the phosphorus out.
Yeah, and.
You have the authority, by the way. I mean, just to clarify, Jeff is speaking about state regulations, but do we have a wetland by law? Do we have a, a, a local stormwater by law? So the board can go beyond simply to tend stormwater systems.
Yeah. And, and, you know, so this, this is a, a really good example of when I say, assume it's gonna get built, what are the concerns? And then we can try to address them, right? So, so that's, you know, that's how this process is supposed to work. And then just to follow up on what I said to Ms. Pecone, uh, I'm quite certain that when we did Adams Road, that was over twenty years ago that we did that decision, that we put in there that they can't have, um, you remember?
I don't remember that.
Yeah, I, I think we put in there that, because it was an AC, you see headwaters with a mist coat broken and all that, we, they're, you're not supposed to be using lawn fertilizers or like that. It's possible that that got pulled out because that decision did go to hack. Um, and some things were changed, we won some, we lost some. Um, so it's possible that got pulled out. You know, e- even, even if we did get it in there, then you get the whole enforcement issue. But, you know, being an apartment complex and only one owner and all that sort of thing, I think there's a little bit more control that could be had, uh, for some of these things. And, um, you know, I think it just kinda goes to, you know, really getting a wetlands review of the project and, and, you know, making sure that we, we do everything we can to protect that pond and, and the surrounding wildlife. I mean, it's not just the pond, there's other areas that have been preserved around there as well. So, you know, it's, it's worthy of protecting.
And as we get deeper into the details of this, we get into the waivers, I will be spending more time with the local stormwater regulations and the local wetland regulations relative to compliance for engineering related issues.
Yep.
But it's still worthy of, if the board wants to bring on somebody to look at the wetlands aspect, the wetland scientist, sciences aspect of compliance of those. That certainly would, you know, benefit, um, the peer reviews all.
Thank you. Ms. Yumans, you wanted to say?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. On that point that you just made, and I think Dan spoke to it also. Perhaps we can advance that by, uh, seeking out that wetland scientist with, uh, Conservation Commission. That, those are good suggestions. A couple of points I wanna make, um, a woman spoke earlier about the design, and I think, uh, Steve spoke about, you know, maybe moving that along. I think the design is a major issue in my mind. This is what the select board approved. It has a peaked roof. The flat roofs, to me, are, th- th- they're ugly, and it reminded me of base housing. And I mentioned that at the first meeting. So I don't think that this should be delayed until some other point. I think it's a major point. And in looking at this, I have not seen this picture with a flat roof. This is what the select board approved when they approved the slip. There was no discussion of flat roofs. And I understand that these things change when it goes into a hearing process. I am not satisfied with a flat roof, number one. The other thing, I've spent a lot of time, uh, looking at the design and the open staircase into these. I think there are some design issues there that should be discussed, rather than later, should be discussed sooner. So I'm in total agreement with the woman that got up and spoke earlier about the design. That design issue also comes up in the fire chief's report. The, if you look online at all the issues that he has, and some of those issues deal with the, uh, the roadways and the size of the roadways, and we're talking about impervious services. And it also talks about access to the lower level in one of the buildings in the back and not having adequate access. So I think that there are some design issues here. From the first one that's uppermost in my mind is the, is the flat roof, which I think is ugly. Uh, and, and I don't think it should be, uh, it should be a flat roof. I think the peak that the select board originally approved is what we should demand of this project. And so I, I would like to see a discussion, Mr. Chairman, of that sooner, rather than pushing it off until all of the civil engineering is done and the sewer is discussed and all of the things that we've discussed tonight. Because in, in highlighting the things from the fire department, uh, you know, he has, and they have some issues with the design of this project and getting access to that rear building. So I just wanted to, uh, to make those points. And, and the last point I'll make is on the design issue. When I look at this design and I said, wait a minute, we have in, in New England, we have open entrances into these stairways? I mean, you know, and that's just being, I, I looked at it in greater detail and I made, you know, I pulled it off my computer and I just looked at it and I said, what is, what, does this make any sense? Does it make any sense? So I have some major issues in my mind as a member of this board with the design, and I think it should be addressed sooner rather than later. The plate, the seed should be planted with the developer so as we discuss all of these issues over the next six months, that this just doesn't come up as an afterthought. Thank you.
Chairman, um, a couple of things, uh, Ms. Yumans. The, uh, the select board approved the design with flat roofs. It's specifically listed in the memorandum of agreement with the select board. So it's something everyone should, should review. And then more specifically, the flat roofs were an alternative design specifically to respond to the butters whose, on paper and on the map, were most visually impacted. Theirs, their input was specifically utilized to develop the flat roof building design. They're not here tonight because they're in support of the project, but their comments are available.
I've seen those.
They're very detailed, very, you know, very indicative of their position in support of the project. So I just want everyone to be aware of that. The flat roof design was in response to, to, to multiple public outreach meetings, specifically from input from the butters who were.
But they, they weren't saying they wanted flat roofs, they were concerned about height.
They were supportive of the flat roof design as a result of reducing the height.
They weren't saying they wanted flat roofs, they were talking about height, right?
They were supportive of the flat roof design. It was presented to them and they liked it.
Okay, okay, okay.
And you see flat roofs building being built almost everywhere you drive, you see projects.
So, and, and, right, so you go right up to Prentice Place, and those are flat roofs as well. But what was done there, and quite frankly, I, I, first of all, I agree with Ms. Yumans, you know, the, the flat roofs are, are terrible. Easantly. Um, what Prentice Place did, and it may cost you a couple of units in each building, but what Prentice Place did was basically collapse the top floor into the roof, right? And I think that's really what's gonna need to happen here. Right, so we maintain that height, but it doesn't look like military housing, as I think somebody said. Collapse it in, you lose a unit or two, or you, maybe you lose some bedrooms or something on the top floor, but at least now it looks more like a New England building in the residential neighborhood. So I, I, I agree that these things need to be addressed. Um, you know, at what point you wanna do it, I, I, that sort of matters to me. But just as with Prentice, like, Prentice Place, one of the big concerns I had was the appearance and the view, right? And I, and I feel the same way here in, in Pleasant Street for different reasons, but it's basically the same thing. That, you know, we don't want this to look lousy, it's gotta look like it belongs in the neighborhood. So I agree that something needs to be done with them. How you do that, you know, I, 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 I would suggest that, you know, you've heard, now from a couple of members saying this at Old Leathersfield, you've heard from a bunch of people in the neighborhood that are concerned about the way it appears. I think that's one of those things you need to go off and, and work on.
Yeah, I just think what we haven't heard of closes the butters who were supportive of that.
And I think it, and, you know, we can get into the details when we, when we talk specifically at a meeting about architecture. And I think to that point, maybe that's the next meeting. Cause we're concerned that traffic will be too close to call and, you know, we're making civil site revisions and we're submitting to conservation, maybe it's the perfect opportunity for architecture to just fill that gap. I think we're prepared for that.
Absolutely, yeah. During the last meeting, we did, we did hear the concerns and, uh, the architects are looking at conceptual designs anyways. The big point was, again, you know, over the last fifteen, sixteen months, we were working with the selectmen and, and some of the outreach meetings, we wanted to get down and said, well, if you want it hot, you know, lower, maybe we can do a flat roof, it's a new modern design that's happening a lot everywhere. Uh, would argue, you know, I'm, I'm an architecture buff, does it fit in the neighborhood, does it not? Is it modern, does it, a cross between modern and work? You know, we could argue that point all day long, but we take it under advisement, try to see if we can blend into the neighborhood a little bit, uh, for better. So that, that's, that's ongoing, actually.
I, I, I'd, I'd, I'd actually look at, at what was on Prentice Place and see, you know, what, what was on there. And, and those buildings were actually gonna be, you know, effectively a story taller. We just bring the roof down, collapse it in, and, you know, and, yeah, they lost some units, um, you know, lost some bedrooms, but so be it.
Yeah, and, and first batch with Mr. Yumans as well, um, he, he's, he's, he's pretty investigative. Uh, there is some sites I could probably even, uh, lend you to for a field trip to see some of these buildings that are very, very similar with gable roofs actually in, in place. I might have to drive out to Deadham, uh, but they're, they're very nice, uh, as proposed. Sometimes black and white drawings of a quick conceptual, they, they look terrible, and I do agree, it looks like, uh, US Marine Corps, so. We're, we're, we're working on nice illustrations and stuff before we get in.
Can we have photos? I mean, can you take photos of Deadham and bring them so we can see?
Thank you, Renner, exactly.
Yeah, well, that as well, but.
Oh, real world.
Yeah, but it's a real world one you can kinda look and see as well.
It's even with Prentice Place, even with Prentice Place, so Tier Cain gave us different options to look at, and we had choices, and we all looked at them and said, okay, this is better. And he did rework the architectural drawings to where we all were happy with the way they looked, so.
Yep.
That would be great, to have your choices.
Yeah, that, 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 that goes hand in hand with, uh, obviously color, cause then you have a design you might like in black and white, and then like, what the heck are you guys doing with dark brown? No, I want red, I want, you know.
Right.
But at least we'll have some nice choices and, and typically we'll have a nice scenario and try to blend maybe into the, the character of the neighborhood as well, so.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Morrow, you want to speak?
Yeah. Oh, yes, I do. John Morrow, fifty-four Pleasant Street. Going back to the discussion of the flat roofs, in the outreach units, we were told they would meet the character of the neighborhood. And the only thing that we got was thirty-five feet. That's the character, just to clarify. How many complexes does Eastland now apartment complexes manage? Do we have a list of all those that you own and manage?
Yeah, we have, uh, one current, uh.
One?
Yeah.
Residential.
One residential, and.
How many units?
Then we have, uh, three hundred and twenty-four units being constructed, uh, right now, which is presently programmed in Auburn.
How many, how many units are in the one that you own?
I know, you, you have to open, share the microphone.
There's fifty, fifty-two in, uh, Wellsley.
In Wellsley, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, so this is fairly new to Eastland, is owning and operating over a hundred apartment units.
Uh, we have a professional, uh, uh, management company that takes care of that, that they have several thousand units. It's a professional company.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I understand, but I, I just wanted to get back to, yeah, because, um, I, I, I was under the understanding that this is something you've done many times, but it's not.
The architectural style of the plan that he was referring to, Mr. Yumans was referring to with the, uh, the open air access units have been done several times with, uh, architecture.
Do we get the addresses to those sites so we can go look?
Yeah, I just said, but, I'm gonna CC it to the, uh, Katrina.
I appreciate that.
And then you can do a site visit, you know.
Right, and I brought up, I think I brought, I know Mr. Yumans brought up, but I brought up the fifty-foot cars last time. Like you said, it's like going to the Ramada Inn on your, on your drive through to Florida.
Not an accurate state of the. These are people's homes. Yeah. You know, these are people's homes, they're not, it's not Ramada Inn, these are really nice apartments. These are where your neighbors are gonna live, these are where people are gonna live.
I, I know.
We're in a housing crisis.
The, the point, the point's remained about the open air, we, we got it, we just got it.
I just wanted to.
And, and they got it.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Popoli, forty-one Pleasant Street. Um, two quick questions. The first, at our recent town, um, meeting, we voted and modified the parking requirements for all new developers. How does that apply here? Cause this hasn't enveloped, yeah.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't because of when this was applied, but I thought that change was only for the, the, um, community business district or, or the, the common district?
Yeah.
Like, if you have a council.
It's, it's for one of the older districts.
Village mixed use.
Village mixed use, I, I thought it was always limited.
It was limited to that?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and as far as traffic, I have to piggyback on, um, what are you guys, thirty-nine? I'm forty-one Pleasant, I'm right on the corner. Um, I've had people drive up over my neighbor directly across, off his lawn, through his driveway, and take out mailboxes because of the curb. Um, back in two thousand and seven, we had nineteen children living between my home and John's, and they were constantly back and forth with parents, holding hands, stopping cars. At the time, a select board member lived in one of those homes and had three. At the time, a select board member lived in one of those homes and had three children that were part of that. Um, we were calling the police, we were asking for speed traps, we were asking for anything. We were told it was unsafe for police officers to do speed traps because it's too narrow to pull people over. The select board member who was the neighbor at the time asked about can we put in a crosswalk, can we do something? We were told a crosswalk is a false sense of security and your kids will get killed. You are now gonna have a density of children way more than my nineteen going back and forth with sidewalks you're providing to send them to cross. I am terrified for the safety of the kids in that, that area. It's a density issue and I don't know if this makes sense. I still, I'm terrified every time, anytime anyone leaves my home, please be careful backing out. Please, they think it's two ninety. And we, I don't know how to fix that and we're not making it better. This was back in two thousand and seven.
Understood.
And now we've added all these developments and now we're gonna send in this amount of density? It feels like we should have some control for safety.
Understood, thank you. We need housing, we love that.
I'm all for housing, I really truly am, it's the amount.
Understood, understood, sir, please, let's keep the comments to when you recognize, end of my call.
Scott Navitski, forty-nine Pleasant Street, I have three kids and now they're. I wasn't gonna bring up traffic, but since there might be some people that hear about it. They're a new development and appreciate you guys putting a hundred foot view for people pulling out of there, cause that's important. How does the traffic study or peer review of that consider that probably no other driveway pulling out or street that currently exists has a hundred foot view? I, I don't have a ten foot view. Now we're gonna add.
It's a question for.
A hundred tens, I, I, again, I know they're, they're gonna listen to this, so I, so I want, I want a question that I'd like to have addressed.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yep. Oh, yes, sir.
Bucking up here, Sam, it's a rubber roll.
Just saying.
I did. Michael Swanson, nineteen Christopher. The, the only thing, you're talking about the, um, looking through the application and, and the deviance, deviation from, uh, some of the buildings like, uh, away from each other, close or, uh, density. I'm kind of, I looked at, uh, like with the police and the fire entered in, it's like just the safety of the people that are gonna be there. That's my major, that's my first stance on top, my head is like, you know, it's just like, because just like when they built the new fire, uh, uh, building and they figured out they couldn't get a big truck in there. So, uh, that type of thing, it's like just that.
Those, those comments are very important to the whole process and they, they will be taken very seriously and, and, you know, and they, and they know that as well. They, they, they know they need to address this. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Man up, it's seventy-nine Old Westboro Road. I just wanted to respond to a couple of things. One is in terms of the, you know, select board approved design. That's not our job, that, that's your job. So, and, and this is the first time that the select board's gone through a lift process. And it's not at all clear how we're supposed to go through that, working with the developers to come up with something that's enough for us to indoors or not indoors. So we did the best that we could, um, and we asked the developers to do some sidewalks, which they marked things out, they did, did some meetings, they responded with written responses to the concerns that they got along, so. But it was never our, our intention to approve a design. That would very much be stepping on the CBA's, uh, authority and it was never our intention to do that. So, um, I think that, uh, we have some concerns that we can help address maybe. I'm hearing the traffic and that's something that, that we heard from a lot of residents, um, all across, they're all down Pleasant Street. And I think that there is some work that needs to be done from the town. And again, this is me speaking as an individual, not as a board member on behalf of anybody, but I think that there's an opportunity for the town to at least look at some of these issues with, um, with traffic on Pleasant Street generally. Things like sidewalks have been, you know, for a few years on our list and you can see the sidewalks going in, in various parts of the town. This is super challenging road, I don't know if that's even possible across effective, but, you know, things like that, signaling, working with the traffic safety committee to see what's possible, so I just wanted to talk with, to those two things. We expect you guys now to carry this through with the developers and do your thing to get to that finalized design. And there's a lot of things that were brought up tonight that I expect will, you know, so I, I look forward to you guys just continuing, uh, to work through this, thank you.
Thank you. And, and, you know, for what it's worth, I mean, I, you know, I heard what Mr. humans was saying about the select board, but the whole time Mr. humans was saying that I had in my mind, it really wouldn't matter to me what the select board approved, you know, I, I reckon that it's, you know, it's our job to take you know, one of our conceptual drawings and, and move forward as best we can as, and do our job essentially, so. Yeah, I mean, may, maybe it didn't, maybe it didn't really matter, in my mind, it doesn't matter. So I hope that's, make it as, as good as we can based on all of this, yeah. All right, so.
Jim, just going on, just to clear on the panel as well. I think it was in the spirit of kind of the negotiation during our first, first presentation of the lengthy lift process of, you know, working with the, the town, what's the concern with the neighbors and how can we identify, move forward with the CBA. So that's why we initiated a traffic study in advance of a forty B to just submit as part of the lift to say, yeah, it makes pretty much some sense, that's a good level, so. A lot of those things were incorporated in there, but again, it's up to you. But at least we got a good intelligent head start with Burns Landscaping, a lot of issues, uh, the gentleman on the corner with drainage concerns, his property, so. A lot of that's, things have been vetted kind of in advance in preparation for the short, shorter period of this, you know, uh, project, so. I appreciate that.
Understood and agreed.
We used to, um, hire a consultant to go over the performance, why did we stop?
Who said we stopped?
Did we do one on, and I wasn't proud of Prentice Place, did we do one?
Oh, yeah.
Are we gonna do one here?
Uh, it was justified, sure.
Cause I'm not familiar at all with apartments, so.
Yeah, you know.
That's the only reason I brought that up, if there was houses or condos.
You know, I, I, I think we're a little bit, that usually goes later in the, in the process. You know, I will say that the, the pro forma review for the price stated apartment was a joke. Um, cause basically the, you know, they're saying that the proposal did not meet the state standard for profitability. So what their proposal, what they wanted to do didn't meet the standard, which means anything that we tried to make less economic would be even worse, so. But, you know, i- in my mind, that was, it was a joke.
Okay.
Um, but let's see where we get and, and, but we absolutely, I think we've done one on every project. I don't think there's anything we haven't done around, so. If, if it's appropriate, we will. Yep. Maybe work the.
Hi, it's Carlos, thirty-nine Pleasant Street. Is the number of units negotiable or the?
Everything's negotiable. Now, now, in, in reality. What did I just say, that, he, he, he can put me, a pro forma in front of right now, I'm sure, that says this project does not meet the economic standards of profitability that the state or D H C D or someone has established. I'll, I'll bet any money, I mean, Prentice Place did it. So if we say you need to lose fifty units or something, he's gonna say, wow, now the project's uneconomic. Well, it's starting uneconomic, but it's still uneconomic, so we won't have anything to stand on under appeal of that. But like, you know, everything, everything's negotiable and, you know, so, yeah.
We're all for affordable housing, I mean, I don't speak for everybody here, but I'm for.
And closer to the micro U.
Affordable housing, it's just, you know, the concerns that everybody else raised.
I'm sorry, the, the volume, the volume, number of people.
The number of people in the volume, I mean, I think it's a great thing.
Understood, thank you. Sir, I'm, I'm gonna wrap this up, circle. Nine twenty-five, we need to be done by ten.
To, 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 okay, in terms of profitability.
Now we're really, I wish I had.
Yeah, yeah, well, just, just to quick aside, there's houses on Peters Way that sell for a million dollars. Uh, the, the lot size is tiny. Could they put in twenty houses like Peters, Peters Way and get twenty million dollars, isn't that money enough, isn't that enough?
Mr. Adams asked this exact same question last time and the developers were pretty clear that he feels this is what he needs to do to make money. All right, um, so for, for next steps, I, I think, I think the board is in agreement, why don't engage, uh, the traffic review? The gentleman that you recommended, do we need to do anything right now to, to do that or?
So I, I think you heard, I think you heard the applicant consent.
Yeah.
So I would have Katrina get in touch with Kevin, get them under contracts.
Yeah.
Uh, as soon as possible, so as soon as that comes in, we ship that out to Kevin and get started on it, hopefully for, and have something maybe about next week.
Katrina, I, I think it's important that his, um, scope of services, have, have a line added that says he will review this meeting and the prior meeting, uh, videos, so that that's done, so it's, so it's on, in writing that he's gonna do that and make sure it happens, that's extremely important. Okay, all right, um, and then as far as our next meeting, um.
Do you wanna get into the wetland issue now or?
Yeah, I, I mean, if I look towards what is at our next meeting, it may or may not be traffic, if it's not traffic, then what?
I, I just, again, I'm really concerned about time.
Yeah.
And I think if we can get the wetland, if we can get Art Allen on board, get him engaged now, if there's a consent to that, and then ask the applicant to revise the waiver list, I think you said you're going to, right? So that, just, just to formalize this, so we're clear that the board has asked you to do that and you've agreed to do that.
Yep, okay, so at, at that, that, at, at this point, that's done, right? So we've agreed to engage Art Allen for wetlands review, we've agreed to engage, um, I can't remember the guy's name, but.
Kevin.
Kevin for the, um, for the traffic. As far as our next meeting goes, we're not exactly sure what'll be on, but I guess we wait and see what comes in and who's ready to go. And at the very least, I would expect there'll be some responses to Jeff Walsh's review that we maybe can discuss as well. So, okay, um, let's talk about a date for our next meeting.
I don't really have one.
Oh, do we?
Fifteenth of June.
Well, the fifteenth of June, we have three forty eights. We have a continuation of three bridal ridge, we have two other new ones that have come in.
Okay, so fifteenth of June is out, um, and that's a Thursday.
Yep.
Um, for what it's worth, I, I'm at risk to be out of the country for the last two weeks of June. So we really tried to, I mean, I hate to do two nights in a row, but I'm going on the first. Are you going to six through to fourteen?
So the library, this room is available the first or the seventh, I don't know about the fourteenth.
So you're back on the fifteenth.
Yeah, back late for the fourteen.
What are the cases on the fifteenth?
It's adding a deck on a pre-existing non-comformal structure, so it's, it's two, it's two special formats, but we have three bridal ridge, which is the variance.
Any indication of that maybe is gonna go away?
Nothing yet, haven't heard.
I think we need to go for the fifteenth, um, and we need to try to be as efficient as we can. You know, I, I can tell you this, I will know better on the fifteenth whether I'm gone, when my trip is gonna happen. But, so again, I don't know if you're clapping, but if Peter's gonna be out the first two weeks, I, I'm at risk of being out the, the next ones. If we schedule for, let's say, the twenty-first, you know, or it's, you know, twenty-eighth of June and, and I'm gone, then, you know, then I think we're, we're probably forced to either, either lose me.
Or you could mull on us.
Oh, you're right, it could.
Yeah, either you could mull.
Yeah, Peter too.
Peter mull him too.
What's that, what's that?
Watch, yeah, watch it. Let's go for the fourteenth.
All right, I just have to check, I, I, I can say we're here. Well, they didn't tell me about the fourteenth.
Oh, wait, I'm, I may have looked at this wrong, fourteenth is Wednesday, right?
Is the Wednesday, yeah, I just have to see if this room's available, Beth, Beth will make it happen for us, so I, I don't see it being an issue.
Yeah, okay, um, but how does the board feel about back to back? Everyone else arguing?
Excuse me, yeah, I suppose.
Fourteen, uh, two nights.
Yeah, so fourteen, ten thirty.
I don't think you can do three forty eights on the.
Well, here's the problem.
I know one's gonna be a snap because if they don't make a deal.
I, I, I think, I think it would be better, Peter, to, to have a full night, you know, if, if we can, if we can hit traffic and do it, I think we should.
Yeah, we don't think we could do that the same night as the fifteenth. If we just focused on traffic, oh, you're not.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we push out to when I'm not here, uh, right, then you lose me running it and, you know.
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think.
Could we?
I'll ask the TV question.
No, but, no, actually, reality, Peter, you, you, you ask them the next, if you have questions, you ask them the next time.
Yeah. Can we do the forty eights on the fourteen?
No, because we continued three bridal ridge to the fifteenth.
Well, wait a minute, we could do the other two. The only thing we have to do is bridal ridge, we could do it just like we did tonight.
Correct.
Take care of that first thing on the fifteen.
Yeah.
Yep.
Then go into this, so you have, you, you, you got plenty of time, you have an advertising.
I haven't advertised anything yet.
Excellent, yeah, I like that.
I mean, you could also.
Two forty eights and we even got room then for another forty eight that comes in.
On the fourteen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
And do the fourteenth and the fifteen?
We're still going to fourteen and fifteen, but the fourteenth will be forty eights.
So the fourteenth is gonna be eight ninety-five and eight ninety-six.
Will the fourteenth be virtual then?
Oh, the high.
Yeah, the fourteenth will be high rate, it'll be in the town hall.
And it'll be conference room A.
Conference room A, the fifteenth will be here.
And it's gonna be Pleasant and eight ninety-four.
If it's still there.
Right.
Yeah.
I haven't heard.
Maybe we get lucky and it goes away, okay, I like that a lot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right, so, so with that, everyone disappearing, which is fine, um, we got it.
And that's the other issue, is if the amount of people in the public dwindle, we can go back.
Right, but I, I counted, I counted at one point.
So did I.
It was over forty.
Right, and then you add us in, we're at sixty.
In the capacity of age, yeah, so I think we still need to stay here.
Yep, I know.
Okay, right. All right, so, uh, at this point then I would entertain a motion to continue case number, oh, no, no, I'm sorry, there's one, is Scott Navitski still here? You are. Um, just, we, we do see all the public comment and read all the public comment. Scott actually sent in a couple of questions, I think that are probably on people's, a little bit on people's minds, that I, I wanted to address, um. So, um, Scott was asking about the hundred eighty day clock in respect to the, um, the D H C D F P I, I think that's already been answered. That's, the hundred eighty day clock, I got told for that. Um, and Scott also asked about, you know, if like Snow Road or Millennium Drive forty Bs come in and suddenly now we, uh, have the S H I numbers that we need, can we, does that, now, then we being in safe harbor, would that affect this application, and I'm pretty sure the answer's no. So if we wake up tomorrow and somehow suddenly we're back into safe harbor, well, I mean, that's probably not a realistic question, but if, if Snow Road comes in and gets approved and and, and built before this, I guess what we're heading, is there any way that we can go back into safe harbor?
No, this, the only way safe harbor could be used as a defense to this application was to invoke it within fifteen days of this application carried. So that it has passed.
Okay, all right, that is, that answered that part of the question and, uh, I thought there was one other thing, I said there was, there was. Oh, and then, then the last question, he, he talked about, once we hit the ten percent, are we firmly in? Well, no, first of all, we're, the numbers that have been getting us safe harbor weren't even the ten percent, it was just meaning our housing production plan, which is a small. It was just meaning our housing production plan, which is a smaller number. And then, once we get into the ten percent, yeah, we're good until the town grows enough that suddenly we're no longer ten percent. Okay, I think they were excellent question, I just wanted to make sure that... I think the question that may be on other people's minds, I wanted to clear that. Now, I entertain a motion to continue case number... January.
Just a point of clarification.
Yeah.
So, the meeting on the fifteenth, with, our intentions would be to talk about traffic. The peer reviewer would have at least two weeks to review updated, hopefully more, maybe up to three weeks. If for some reason that falls apart, we'll be prepared to talk about architecture.
Okay, but what about conservation as well? That, if you're, that could also...
Well, yeah, because if you're gonna retain...
And several.
Yep, yeah, so...
So, I think, I guess in my mind, it's a little bit in flux right now, what we end up talking about is gonna depend on what is right, right? So, the traffic study, it takes two or three weeks to complete, probably not gonna be ready, right? But maybe the weather's will be. So, in most case, then maybe all we're talking about is, we'll apply us to chat, and we can talk about architecture.
As we get closer, we'll all know that. We won't build them in the meeting, we won't drop that on anybody.
Right, yeah. All right, so, entertain a motion to continue case number eight ninety-two to January, June fifteenth, yeah, June fifteenth, seven PM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Actually, I need to, we'll call the Mr. Humans.
Yes.
Mr. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Waller.
Yes.
Miss Reed, since yes.
They just met, they just asked.
Whatever, the vice chairman or whatever votes, yes.
Mr. Damon, the meeting location will be here?
Yeah.
Yes. Whoa, whoa, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, thanks, yes.
Thank you.
Second. Seconded.
All right.
Bye. Bye. Goodnight, thank you.